I am calling this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund and the Board of Trustees of the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund to order for the record. It is Monday, February 1st, 2021, and it is now 6:41 PM. So, jumping right in, item number one on the agenda is I will entertain a motion by City Council and City Employees Retirement Fund representatives to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held August 3rd, 2020.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, so I heard Councilwoman Ruette, was that Councilman?
Rubino.
Thanks, thank you. Somebody has, I think I hear some noise in the background of somebody's.
I think it might be a meal.
Oh, okay. So, I have a motion. Actually, I may have read that run. So, we don't have a quorum of the Fireman's Pension, Jonathan, so I can only take this vote from the Council and City Employees, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so the motion is made by Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilman Rubino, or vice versa. Any questions on the minutes? Hearing none. Give another second or two. Then I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion carries. Item two on the agenda is, again, a motion from the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund to approve the minutes of the special meeting held August 17th, 2020.
Don't move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
I'll second.
By Councilman Rubino, thank you. Are there questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any? Motion carries. All right, so we're going to table item three. And we'll move into item number four under Presentations. And I'm going to open this up for a presentation of the July 1, 2020 pension valuations. Presenting for Hooker and Holcomb tonight is Steve Lemansky. I do believe I saw his name on here. Just.
Evening.
Yep. Hi, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor.
So you can jump in when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Is okay if I share my screen?
Please.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, good evening. So, I am going to use this presentation as a guide for tonight for the two valuations that we did for the city's pension plan and Police and Fireman's Pension Plan. These, these valuations are done as of July 1, 2020. You might recall they're done biannually, so they're a snapshot of the status of the fund every other year. Just the agenda for tonight, can I pull up points about what I'm going to go through, a little overview of the purpose of the valuation? We'll go through the results, talk about some of the changes that were reflected for this valuation, then some detail about the city contribution, which is known as the ADAC, or actuarially determinate player contribution, and some information about the assets and the investment return assumption that we're using. So, as a backdrop, I always like to start with, you know, why we're here. We talk about what the valuation represents and what it does not represent. The key thing on this page is this box, kind of the gold box. It's, it's something that must be true over the life of the plans in terms of all the cost of the plan, the city's ultimate cost, meaning the ultimate amount of cash that the city funds into the plan over time. That money going in must equal the money going out, which are benefits paid to pensioners, any administrative expenses paid out. The important offset to the offsets to this equation, or this, this thing that must be true, are, to the extent the fund earns investment return over time, that's an offset that reduces the city's ultimate cost of the plan, and also employees, remember, are making contributions contractually as they're working. So, they are funding some of their, basically self-funding a portion of their benefits, and therefore that reduces the city's costs. So, this, this is true over the life of the plan. And then what the valuation does every two years is basically take a snapshot in time of where the plan is on July 1st of the valuation date, and we assign a, we sign a current cost or a budgeting cost known as the ADAC, which is the city's contribution. And there's a couple pieces to that. There's the payment against the unfunded liability. Currently, there are 22 years left on that mortgage, if you will. And then there's a piece called the normal cost. So, to the extent that actives are earning benefits, there's a current cost associated with those benefits the actives are earning. And this is the budget cost for the, for the next two fiscal years, and that's what we're talking about tonight. Any questions on that before I jump into the valuation? Okay. So, just a backdrop of some of the things that have happened over the last couple of years, and I'll go into details as we go through the presentation. The funded ratio, which is the ratio of the assets to liabilities, if, if that ratio were 100%, the plan would be sort of perfect balance actuarially. The assets would cover all the liabilities earned to date. Those, those percentages are as shown here on, on the page, so roughly 80% for the city and 62% for police and fire. And you can see those are about the same as they were two years ago. The city has come down a little bit, the police fires slightly higher, and I'll go into details as to how that happened in a moment. So, generally, we want to see these percentages trending towards 100% over time, and they will as the city funds the benefits. The contribution or the ADAC for fiscal '21, it's about 1.3 million on the city plan and about 4.5 million on the police and fire plan, so 5.85 million in total, and you can see the comparison against two years ago. So, in total, the contributions are up versus two years ago. Again, we'll talk about the reasons for that as I go through this. Part of what happened was investment returns on the last, for the last couple of years have been slightly below or below the assumption. So, the assumption back in 2018 was 7% per year. The fund actually earned about 4.7% compounded over that period. So, that was, that's what we call loss, actuarial loss, because it was unfavorable relative to the assumption. I'll go into a little bit more detail in a few slides, but the asset value that we use when we measure the funded status is actually on a smooth value. It, it smoothes out the gains and losses, the ups and downs in the market, if you will. But even with smoothing, that return was about 6.6% compounded. So, again, slightly below the assumption. So, that's part, that served to increase the contribution, all else being equal, because the investment returns were below the assumption. In terms of the liabilities of the plan, those were, for both plans, those came in a little more favorable than predicted by the assumptions. Salary increases were lower than assumed on the city plan, and the retirement and turnover patterns that happened for the police and fire plan were favorable from an actual perspective. So, on the liability side of the equation, that was to the good. Some assumptions were updated. As always, we look at the assumptions when we do the valuation, and we propose some changes to the assumptions, and those were adopted for this valuation with respect to mortality, inflation, salary increases, and investment return. And on net, those assumptions are more conservative than they were two years ago, and that served to increase the contribution by about 524,000 combined. And then finally, as a reminder, as you know, both of these plans have been closed to new hires for a number of years. And as it sits today, almost two-thirds of the liability for both plans associated with members who are no longer employed by the city. And there's no, you know, magic to these percentages, it's just a marker. And, you know, just from working with these plans, a number of these plans throughout the state, these percentages indicate to me that the plans are very mature, you know, which is, which is the case for closed plans. And eventually, clearly, these will both be 100% because there are no new members coming in. So, eventually, all the members will be retired, they'll be inactive, and that'll be the case. So, in terms of some details about what we looked at, and the assumptions and the changes that were made, excuse me. As was the case last time, you might remember, the assumption was dropped in terms of future investment returns, and that was reduced by 25 basis points from 7% to 6.75%. We, we have capital market assumptions, which you can think of as a forward look as to what we think different asset classes are going to return going forward based on our assumptions. And I know that Tony and his group have their own set, but we believe something in the 6.5% to 7% range is reasonable. So, you're right in the middle of that range right now, whereas before you were at the top. And in general, the trend continues towards lowering overall in the public sector. We do a survey every year, we publish it for the state of Connecticut, plans at the local level. And that averages now at 6.74% based on our most recent survey. So, right in the middle of the pack in terms of that assumption in the public sector. Because we're reducing the investment return, that means that more money is needed. And the actuarial liability, which is really a measure of the reserve, the, the money needed to cover current benefits accrued went up by about 2.6% due to this, due to this change. Mortality, believe it or not, the, the governing body that consulting actuaries work under, which is the Society of Actuaries in the United States, they have never until very recently published a study that's strictly based on public sector pensioner mortality. They did such a study in 2019, and that table was picked up for this valuation as well as the, the latest projection scale, which a projection scale takes a look into the future, how life expectancies might change going forward. So, we picked up the most recent changes. These are the latest and greatest tables. So, you might be interested to know that public sector employees are living longer. That's what the study showed than the previous tables predicted. Okay, so, they're living long, expected to live longer. So, what that means is pensions are expected to be paid for longer. And of course, if they're going to be paid for a longer period of time, that's going to increase the amount of money that's needed to fund them. So, for this plan, that increased that number by about 1.4%. Okay, so both of these changes increased the liabilities, all else being equal. The last change was really consistent with the study that's done every year by this, by the Trustees for Social Security. This, these, this is the report that comes out, you know, when they say predicting the solvency of Social Security and Medicare, they, they do all these projections. There's all kinds of assumptions that are baked into that study, and one of the key ones is long-term inflation. So, that came down by 20 basis points in this, the, the study that came out in 2020. So, the assumption that we reflect, which underlies salary increases, think of as like a long-term prediction of general wage increases, we dropped that from 2.6 to 2.4. So, that only affects the active members going forward to predict what their, their salary is going to look like at retirement, but that did drop the liability by about 2/10 of a percent. Okay, so on net, we saw a net increase, you know, roughly 3.8% or so when you combine all these assumption changes. Okay, so, what do the numbers look like given these changes? What this slide is for the city plan, and I have a similar one for the police and fire. What we show up top, this is the 2018 valuation, this is this year's valuation, 2020. And up top is the funded status, so we've got the assets of the plan against, on a smooth basis versus the liability last time. So, 40 million in assets versus 49 million in liability. The difference is the unfunded liability or the mortgage. If I just, if we divide the assets by the liability, that's how we get the funded ratio. So, plan was about 81.3% funded last time, 2018. And the ADAC or the city's contribution that we calculate was about 1.24 million. And the, these are the two pieces that I talked about upfront. So, for the actives in the plan, the current cost of fund those benefits, their earning is about 490,000. The rest is the payoff or the paydown on the mortgage, about 750. So then, we fast forward here to 2020, we've got the same, you know, the same measures before any changes are reflected, the plan's funded status actually improved slightly to 83.6%. And that's, that really comes from those gains I talked about upfront, which, you know, that more than offset the fact that the plan earned 6.6% on a smooth basis on the asset side. So, before any changes reflect, the city's contribution actually came down about 100,000, 110,000 or so. But since the more conservative assumptions were adopted, the lower investment return and so forth, the assets don't change, but the liability goes up. So, all else being equal, that brought the funded ratio down to 80.4% and the city's contribution at one. Any questions about that? In terms of how those numbers get calculated and what they mean? Police and fire, same exhibit. Similar results, saw an improvement in the funded ratio from 61.3% to 64.5%. Assumptions were tightened up, brought that down to 62.1%. Similarly, there was a reduction in the ADAC prior to the, reflecting the assumption changes, and then reflecting those changes increased the city's contribution to 4.53 million. Little bit of detail on the asset side of, of the, of the equation, if you will, showing you cash flow. So, we're showing, we have two year, because we have two years, we have 18 and 19, and the next slide will be 1920. But, for example, the city plan back in 2018, these are market values, about 40.34 million, you've got cash flows coming in, 1.54 million, most of that coming from the city at this point. Money going out about 3 million. 2.7 investment return, we ended the year at 41.6% for a 6.7 return. Similar results in the police and fire, both plans cash flow negative, okay, not, not a cause for concern or alarm in our opinion. This is a natural thing that happens as a plan matures, because I always say to my clients, that's, that's a key reason why you pre-fund pension benefits, because otherwise, if you just did pay as you go, you wouldn't get to the point where your cash flow going into the plan is less than the pay-as-you-go cost. You know, the, the investment return here, there's a lot of the heavy lifting to help pay for those benefits eventually. Same, similar result in 1920, that was not as favorable year. You know, we were fortunate, I mean, like all public sector plans, and the, to end the year in the, in the black, if you will, given what was happening with the, with the pandemic, and you might remember the bottom of the market, I think, was March 23rd. Things were looking pretty grim, at least in the, in the capital markets. But over the next three months or so, things rebounded nicely. So, not necessarily something to really write home about, but again, did end the year in the black about a positive 3% return. I talked a little bit about the smoothing method, and you know, without getting too bogged down in the weeds, it just shows the mechanics of the asset value we use. So, on the city plan, market value sitting there, the trust on, for the valuation was about 41.2 million. We keep track of the gains and losses over the last four years, and we smooth out those returns to the extent they either exceed or fall short of whatever the assumption is. So, that, that assumption over the last couple of years is 7%, it was 7 and 1/4 previously. And then, we recognize these gains and losses over 25% per year, and then we keep track of them on a rolling basis. So, where, where things sit from a valuation perspective on July 1st was there were some unrecognized net losses that have not yet fully been reflected in the asset value. So, the smooth asset value is actually a little bit higher right now than the market. So, 42.4% for the city plan and 65.85% or so for the police and fire. And the, these are the asset values that we use when we measure the funded ratio that I went through a few minutes ago. In terms of the assumption, this is, this is an exhibit that's in the reports. It's really a disclosure item that's required in the city's financials every year, and it's, it's showing the support, or how to, kind of how do we get there in terms of coming up with the assumption of 6 and 3/4 in this case? All the asset classes here, the equities, large cap, mid-cap, and so forth, and then bonds, real estate. We show the target allocation for the fund, and we show our capital market assumptions. I'm sorry, these are, these are Tony's group's capital market assumptions in terms of real returns. We weight them, take kind of a blended average of them, and then we, since these are real returns, we add something for inflation, because these are real returns that are expected to be kind of the reward, if you will, for taking on risk, you know, beyond a risk-free investment. So, on a raw basis, I'll say with the model shows a 659. We, we know from studying this that potentially you can do better than that through regularly, regularly rebalancing asset allocation, investment selection, and so forth. So, that's why we say the range is, in this case, 6.5 to 7. And again, you're right in the middle of that range. And I'm looking ahead to next time, 2022, and this, you know, I keep this on here as a standing item, because capital market assumptions do change over time, inflation does change over time. So, regardless of what's happening in terms of asset allocation, that expectation may change as well. So, we want to keep an eye on that, and not saying that it needs to change, but you want to at least take a look at it. And then, the last bullet item is the funding policy contribution. Again, it's a 22-year amortization that's been worked down, I believe it was originally 30, and it's been shorter and shorter and shorter. It's slightly on the long side relative to, you know, sort of what the ideal range would be, general, generally, we like to see that in the 15 to 20-year range. And you're getting there, I mean, you'll be at 20 years next time, but what that's doing right now is the ADAC is slightly below, in the case of the city, and a little further gap on the police and fire, maybe we're ideally where we would like to see those numbers be to make, you know, larger progress in that funded ratio, but you'll get there. I mean, that'll happen naturally as that period shortens up. So, we just want to, again, continue to monitor that relationship. So, overall, I mean, the plans are are healthy, particularly the city plan, you know, with a ratio in the 80s. This, the police and fire plan, that ratio is improving. Now, I look back, I think as recently as 2012, it was, I think, the low to mid 50s, so it's, it's getting there. And overall, I think the results of, of this valuation certainly on the liability side were favorable. So, those are my formal comments, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Steve. So, just before I do a last call for any questions on your report, I just wanted to remind the council members that this exercise, other than us always constantly taking the, you know, gauging the barometer on where we are with our investments and where we are with our obligation to fund these appropriately, these are the, this is the advice, these are the documents that provide us the guidance on how we budget annually for these ADAC liabilities or responsibilities. So, lowering that that assumption from 7 to 6.75% will increase the, the contribution that we will be budgeting. So, when we go through this in the budget cycle, you can expect to see those increases on those line items. And I don't know, I think Alice is on the call, I wasn't sure if there was anything she needed to add to that.
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So then I'll just open for this item. Is there, are there any questions from either board, the City Employees Fund or the Police and Fires Fund? And I'm not seeing anybody raising a hand or calling out to us. So, with that said, we'll move on to our next agenda item. But again, thank you, Stephen. Thank goodness for Zoom, that we didn't have to drag you up here in a blizzard. So grateful for the work that you did on this thing, this report, and look forward to seeing how well, how much more we could chip away at this in the next two years.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so then let's move into item five. This is a presentation of the fourth quarter results of the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund and the City Employees Retirement Fund. And we have Tony Trangisi of DeMeo Schneider and Associates on the call with us. So, I'm going to turn this over to you, Tony.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I will share my screen as well and walk through the, the deck that I think you all hopefully have seen or have the ability to see. I, I do have a couple recommendations for changes to the asset allocation. And so, I'll walk through performance first, and then we'll, we'll get to that, and I'll explain why, of course. Before I do that, are there any questions or things that folks want to make sure I address outside of the usual? All right, great, thanks. And can you see my screen, okay?
Yes, I can.
All right, so I'll just start very briefly with, with a quick snapshot of results in broad markets through the end of the calendar year 2020. And if you scan your eye down this year-to-date or one-year column, the results are the same. You can see how markets performed, and it turned out to be a very good year in equity markets and fixed income markets, really, and somewhat surprising given the environment that, that we dealt with and are still dealing with today. So, the year finished with the S&amp;P up 18.4%. I'm on page six for those following on hard copies. Up 18.4%, so an above-average year for markets. And obviously, markets were very forward-looking to, to produce a result like this. And if you just scan your eye down that column, you'll see pretty robust returns out of many of the equity segments. The NASDAQ index was up 45%, Russell 1,000 growth up 38.5%. Those two indexes tend to be heavily exposed to large technology names that have, that were really the best performers of the year, just as it had been for the previous couple of years. So, that's the Amazon, Google, Microsoft, Facebook, Apple. Those five stocks represent over 20% of the S&amp;P 500 and even bigger weights of those two other indexes that I mentioned. So, they were the best place to be throughout the year. And if you were in other segments of the equity market, you did well, but maybe not quite as well. So, a, a way to highlight that would be to look at the value index compared to growth. In the year, the value index In the year, the value index is up two point eight percent. Remember, I said growth was up thirty eight and a half percent. So about a thirty five percent difference between growth and value, pretty staggering spread, about as wide as we've ever seen really historically. Small cap stocks were up, that's the Russell two thousand index, were up about twenty percent on the year. And they were up thirty one percent in the fourth quarter alone. So coming into the fourth quarter of the year, small cap stocks were actually negative and rallied to a significant degree to get to that positive twenty percent on the year as a whole. And interesting, one thing we did see throughout the course of the year, or at the end of the year, rather, is a bit of a leadership change. So most of the year, those big tech stocks were the best place to be. But in November and December, we saw a market rally that was not led by that segment of the market. So small cap stocks and value stocks did a little bit better. That actually continued into the early part of January, and then it's been a little bit sideways so far for the for the beginning of this year. So we'll see. It will be interesting, and only time will tell if what began in November was the actual catalyst and shift of leadership away from those large tech names which have performed so very well over the last handful of years towards maybe more value oriented stocks or smaller cap stocks which had underperformed. But but your portfolio is exposed to both and has a very balanced approach, as you know. Last couple of comments I'll make here, international stocks were up about ten point seven percent. Finally, at the near the top of the page, the Barclays Aggregate Index was up seven and a half percent. That's bonds, high grade bonds in the United States, and that's a pretty staggering return. When you think that we started the year with with interest rates very low, the ten year treasury yielding one point nine percent as a proxy. And when rates go up, that's usually a bad that is a bad thing for bond investors. Rates go up, prices come down. We started the year that that one point nine, that's a very low level. Most folks were expecting rates to go up, most most market and economic observers. And in fact, with the COVID crisis, rates dropped dramatically. The ten year treasury dropped to around forty basis points at its low, and it's up just a little over a percent today. So still almost a percent lower than it was a year ago at this time. So when rates come down like that, it's a nice thing for bond returns, and you see that seven and a half percent really robust return. But it does present a challenge for us in the portfolio moving forward as we look at potential return environment, starting with a one percent yield on the ten year. Traditional fixed income, we think, is a real challenge to help achieve the the long term return objectives. That Steve did such a good job of outlining in his presentation. So to get to six, six point seven five percent, when you have a one percent yield on the ten year treasury becomes a real challenge for fixed income. So part of our proposal that you'll see in a few in a few minutes is a reduction and a shifting of the asset allocation within fixed income and a reduction of exposure there as a result of that. So I'll fast forward here, and we'll jump right to the asset allocation. I'm on page twelve, if anybody's falling in the hard copy. You can see at the end of the year, the the employee plan was at forty six point seven million dollars in assets. And the police and fire plan was up at nearly seventy five million dollars in assets. So considerable growth from the numbers that Steve showed you, just because that's six months of difference. Steve, that it goes through June thirtieth, and we're looking at December December thirty first values here. Up at the top of the page, the next page, you can see the plans return over eleven percent on the year. And nine and a half percent of that came just in the fourth quarter. So as I said, as Steve pointed out, the returns for the fiscal year ended in June were a little bit challenged because of the first quarter of this year when markets sold off really sharply, as we've talked about at previous meetings. But since June thirtieth, your plans are up around fourteen and a half percent. So that's a really good six month start to the next fiscal year and the next two year period before Steve and and his folks do your next valuation. So a lot can happen in those next six quarters, but a nice start to hopefully offset some of the challenges that were presented in the in the early part of this calendar year. From a return perspective, how did we get there? A bulk of the performance obviously was generated by investment managers. And as we usually do, if you take a look at this page fourteen, you can see the mix of managers on the top part of the page are your fixed income allocators. Met West is and the Vanguard Bond Fund are your two kind of anchors in that space. And in the in the year, they were up seven point seven and nine point two percent, so very strong returns. Lackluster returns, a floating rate was up about two and a half percent, so a bit of a drag from an allocation perspective. And the Templeton Fund struggled. It was down four. We're actually recommending to replace that fund due to some of the challenges in the positioning in the portfolio, and I'll touch on that in a moment. Within U S equities, the portfolio did well across the roster of managers, as you can see here. You did have a little bit of a value bias in the form of this M F S fund. And as I said, value underperformed growth by quite a wide margin, although that did begin to shift in the latter part of the year. And then the other laggard in U S equities was the small cap manager, which was up eight point two percent. Interestingly, that fund was held up about as good or probably the best of any fund in its class in the first quarter. It was down, but down a lot less than most of its peers. But in the subsequent rally, markets rallied up just as sharply as they fell off in February and March. In the rebound up, they did not keep pace, and you can see, you know, kind of an example of that. In the fourth quarter, their index was up thirty one point four percent, and they were up twenty six percent. So twenty six percent on the surface, you take all day long, but of course, in in comparison to its to its bogey of thirty one, it underperformed. I will say, underperformance in a high octane market like what we saw in the last three months of the year is very typical of that fund. It often will underperform when small cap stocks are accelerating at a rapid rate. But it usually will do a good job of protecting in down and lower low kind of lower up markets. And so the the our expectation is that that would continue to offer that profile going forward. You see the international managers here on the top part of the portfolio, and then finally in the bottom part, so the international managers somewhat mixed returns. And then the bottom part is an inflation protection sleeve, which was added just about a year ago. That includes resource related equities, commodities, and inflation oriented or protected bonds. That sleeve of a portfolio is designed to help protect the portfolio if we have inflation expectedly, especially unexpected inflation. We haven't seen inflation has been lower than two percent, at least printed CPI numbers for the last number of years, really, since the financial crisis of oh eight, oh nine. There's there are some signs that it is returning. And so this mandate, I think, has the potential to offer that diversification and sort of insurance and quotes in in that environment going forward. So it was up three point nine percent, a little better than its benchmark, but really its role in the portfolio, I think, is 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 an important one as a diversifier. So I do have some recommendations, but before I move to that page, are there any questions or thoughts that folks want me to clear up? Okay, great. So I will fast forward to I'll give you the page number. Dan, I can see you're flipping through the hard copy, I think. Sorry, it's a little slow. So we'll jump right to it's page forty nine, if you're in the in the hard copy book. And I may see if I can zoom this in and maybe make it a little easier for you to see. Hopefully, that's a little easier. So we have a number of of recommended changes in the portfolio. And the best way to read this page, I apologize, it's busy because there's a lot, there is a lot going on. The way to read this page is on the left column are the list of all the investments that you have. Here we pulled an updated snapshot of this is the employee city employee plan. This is the balances as of January twenty fifth. So kind of an updated snapshot, and that's the percentage allocation. And then you see your the current target is this column here, and then the blue row is what we're proposing to move the new target to. So assuming after I explain it, if if everybody's in agreement, I think a motion to adopt the new target and then implement is what we would be seeking. And what you can see, what is that new recommendation? We're reducing the target to fixed income down to thirty two. And so I'll talk first, I'll talk high level, and then I'll go into the weeds a little bit. Correspondingly, we're reducing domestic equity target from thirty nine to thirty five. We're increasing the international target up to twenty eight and a half, and the real asset target goes down by about a half a percent. The rationale for this is working through the optimization process that we've have, we have there's some pages earlier in this report that I can point to, but I thought this might be the easiest way to show you. And then in addition to those changes underneath the covers a little bit, you can see how we're proposing to shift the portfolio by reducing exposure to the two core mandates, the Vanguard Bond and Met West Fund from eight to six and eighteen to thirteen. We're proposing to add a new fund called BlackRock Strategic Income. And the purpose of that fund, and there's some more detail on that fund in the subsequent pages that I can go to, is a fixed income manager that has a little bit of a longer leash, can protect better in a rising rate environment than a traditional bond fund by moving their duration, which is exposure to interest rates in a wider across a wider margin. So the the other two funds you have today are intermediate term. They're going to be around five or six year duration. This BlackRock fund can go from negative two to eight years, so a much wider spread. If they move, if they think rates are going to move up, they can move their duration down low and protect. If they think rates are going down, they can go longer and participate as well. What we're it's a very well diversified portfolio. BlackRock is recognized as having some of the best risk analytics in the industry. And we think this fund is where they employ those very successfully and may maybe the best that they do. So we think it's a really nice diversifier in addition to the portfolio in the environment that we're in today. The other meaningful shift in fixed income is to get rid of the Templeton Fund and to replace it with a similar or objective fund called the Brandywine Global Opportunities. So this is the same asset class, global bonds, but just a different manager for the reason we when we looked at the performance, you could see of the Templeton Fund. Within domestic equities, it's just sort of a corresponding reduction across all of the underlying mandates and same on international corresponding increase. International equities have underperformed U S equities by about a three to one margin over the last ten years. So the having a heavy U S bias, which your portfolio has exhibited, has been beneficial. The global market opportunity set is about fifty fifty. It's about fifty five percent United States, forty five percent outside the United States. So if you were to be globally neutral, which is generally the starting point for most investment portfolios, you would be fifty five percent of your equities in the U S and forty five outside. We're proposing, we're not proposing to get you there, but we're proposing to move you closer by going from nineteen to twenty eight and a half. So I said an awful lot there, and I apologize in advance, but I'm happy to answer questions or walk through the rationale for any of those examples, if you'd like.
So thank you, Tony. Yeah, I'm just doing a quick look to see if there's anybody, anybody on this on the boards have a question for Tony with regard to the recommendations? And this again is for the the recommendations on page forty nine, as Tony has pointed out and walked us through, is in regard to the city employees retirement fund.
Yes, the the next page is it's the exact same magnitude recommendation for the police and fire plan.
All right. And because we don't have a quorum of our police and fire, I'm thinking we probably we could probably reach out to see if we can pull together a quorum of that board on Wednesday evening, because we do have a full border safety, a board of safety meeting on Wednesday evening, and we can probably reach out to the other members of the Board of Trustees to zoom in so that we could take care of that one. But at this point, I'm thinking we we should just move or ask the council and the members of the city hall or the city, I'm sorry, city employees retirement fund if they are prepared to make a motion to adopt the recommended the recommended target allocations as reflected on page forty nine of the fourth quarter report of the city plans as prepared by Dimeo Snyder and Associates LLC. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you. I'm sorry. So was that motion by Board of Safety member Bingham?
Yes.
All right. You know, I think we have to hold off on your your motion for Wednesday, if we could pull that board of safety. So I heard I heard Councilman Waldron. Is there another member of the city employees retirement fund?
I'll second it.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Waldron and a second by Councilman.
Rubino.
Rubino, thank you. Are there questions on this motion? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to call this motion. All in favor, this would be council members and members of the city employees retirement fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, this motion carries. So Tony, we'll hold off and see if we could pull something together for Wednesday evening, and you could just go over page fifty to explain to the that board at that time. Does that make sense? Are you available Wednesday evening at six thirty?
I'm just checking. Yes.
Okay. All right. So and I'll make sure when we send this out to the to the members, I'll make sure to point out, you know, for them to pay close attention to that page fifty, just so that they can see what it is that you're asking them to do. I think it would make sense for them to just have a chance to review all that stuff. And I do know that there are some members in the fire department that do pay close attention to these numbers, and you may get a few more questions from them. So all right, so continuing on with your report, the what was anything next?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, so that's 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 the full report, but I'm happy to happy to cover anything else if there are questions.
All right. So it's back to the floor if there are any questions, and I would say anybody, if there's anybody that has any questions on what Tony went through. This is always such a comprehensive report, and sometimes the numbers can be a little daunting, but if there are questions, and if there aren't questions, you can certainly right now that you can think of, you could certainly send them to us, and we can send them out to Tony. And he could give us an explanation if there's anything that you think of later on or after you've had more time to digest this. All right.
Dan's raising.
All right, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, hey, Tony, could you just explain to me why the why you were considering the increase in the international equity again, please?
Sure, Dan. So it's it's there's a couple of reasons for it, but the the biggest is the the broad opportunity set to invest in, you would be close to half and half U S and non U S. And and for quite a while, we've carried a heavy overweight to U S, which has been beneficial. The rationale for kind of moving it forward is that U S markets have continued to perform very well and have outperformed international. As a result of that outperformance over the last ten years or so, As a result of that outperformance over the last ten years or so. The valuation opportunity overseas has become more appealing. So, you know, said another way, uh non-US stocks appear cheaper and more attractive than than US equities. And certainly than they have in the last five or ten years.
Okay, I get it, thank you.
Alright, last, I shouldn't say last call, um, any other questions? Alright.
Um, Mayor, just me, Councilman Rubino, that would be, so what we did is item seven? Is that correct?
Yes. You know what, sorry, I did, I jumped, I jumped through this thing, I I apologize, yeah.
Well, I mean, we had a vote for something, just make sure it's item seven and six will be table till Wednesday.
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, then um, Tony, thank you and we'll try to set this up so that. We'll let you know is that we're, that we have um the quorum for Wednesday and let you know if that's, that works out for us, okay?
Sounds good, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so um as Councilwoman Rubino has pointed out, we're tabling item six, we've moved item seven. Um, so now I have to go through each of the rest of these. So item number eight. I need approval for the um pension computation. So I'm looking for a motion by the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund. Uh to accept the pension computation effective August fourteenth, twenty twenty for James Cass. Traffic Parking Operations Maintainer for the City of Torington Police Department after eighteen point one nine years of service. Keep a motion. Alright, so I heard Councilwoman Ruette, I heard Councilman Waldron. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, again, this is the City Employees Retirement Committee. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Trustees of the City Employees Retirement Fund. To accept the pension computation effective October ninth, twenty twenty for Pamela Prev's, Prev, Prevs? Oh, good lord.
Provuznak.
Provuznak, thank you. Senior Account Clerk for the City of Torington, City Clerk's Office after nineteen point zero five years of service.
They're moved, Waldron.
I heard Councilman Waldron and Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Item carries. Item nine, no, excuse me, item ten. I'll entertain a motion by the Board of Trustees for City Employees Retirement Fund. To accept the pension computation effective January ninth, twenty twenty one. For Jason Langson, Equipment Mechanic for the City of Torington Equipment Maintenance Department after nine point five five years of service.
So moved, Waldron.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second, Rubino.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Item eleven. Again, acting as the um City Employees Retirement Fund. To accept the pension computation effective August fifteenth, twenty twenty. For Young Kim Custodian for the City of Torington Board of Education after fourteen point zero one years of service.
They're moved, Waldron.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second, Cavanaro.
Oh, thank you, Councilman Cavanaro. So um questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We have to table item twelve. And table item thirteen. Um and there being no further business before these boards, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, so um, that's it for our Board of Trustees. And um Jonathan, we'll just try to um poll or see if we can reach out to those other members and make sure we have a quorum. For Wednesday night and put this one on, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. Alright. It is now seven thirty six. And um I will move us right into the regular city council meeting. Um for the record. Um, regular city council WPC Authority meeting, Monday, February first, twenty twenty one. Um and as I said, it is now seven thirty, seven PM. And we'll jump right into um item one, actually before I call this motion, I think Attorney Michelle is on the. The line. Was there anything that, before I call this motion, was there anything you needed to share?
Is this the one on the noise ordinance, Mayor?
It is, yes.
Yeah, the only uh thing I wanted to share is that before this becomes official. It needs to be sent to uh DEEP and approved by DEEP. And so uh I I mentioned that to Jonathan, uh so once uh. Once the council approves it, it would be subject to approval by DEEP.
Okay, alright, so when I call for this motion, I should make a contingent on deep approval?
Correct.
Okay, good, alright. Um, thank you, Vic. Alright, so then um item number one, I will entertain a motion to amend the code of ordinances for the City of Torington. Who include chapter one forty five hereby establishing policies and procedures. Regarding the identification and enforcement of reasonably, unreasonably loud, unnecessary or disturbing noises. Contingent on approval from uh Connecticut DEEP.
Rubino, move it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. Alright, the floor is open for questions before I call the motion. Are there any questions or comments? I think there were some grammatical error or uh um points that were recommended by Tom earlier. We'll certainly have um Attorney Michelle, take a look at those.
We'll check on those.
Okay, good, alright. That doesn't change anything um in regard to the ordinance itself, it's just cleaning it up a little bit here and there. Alright, so then this has to be roll call, um I'm going to um, if there are no questions, call this motion. Um and I'll start with Councilman Cavanaro.
Approved.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino.
Approve.
Councilman Waldron.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruette.
Uh yes.
And Councilwoman Wagner.
Approved.
I think that's everybody, that's one, two, three, four, five. Alright, so the motion carries and um from there, we'll um, we'll have a corporation council follow up with deep and get back to, a report back to us. Alright, moving into item two, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held January nineteenth, twenty twenty one.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
Second by Councilman Waldron, questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's reappointment. Of Janet Ifland as a regular member of the Arts and Culture Commission. For a four-year term expiring December thirty one, twenty twenty four.
I'll move it. Second, Wagner.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's reappointment of Jacques Williams. As an ex-official member of the Arts and Culture Commission for a two-year term expiring December thirty one, twenty twenty two.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron and Councilman Cavanaro.
Yes.
Questions or comments on the motion? Carrying none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion. To reappoint Joseph Petracone Junior as a regular member of the Torington Health District Board of Health. For a three-year term expiring on January ninth, twenty twenty four.
Move five.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino, do I have a second? Second, Councilman Cavanaro, thank you. Questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Item six, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Alex Subcheck. As an alternate member of the Board of Assessment of Peals for a three-year term expiring on December sixth, twenty twenty two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Uh second, Cavanaro.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro, questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the mayor's reappointment of James Bobinski. As a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term expiring on December first, twenty twenty five.
I'm moved.
Second.
Cavanaro.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Cavanaro. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the mayor's reappointment of Starlee Arias. As an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term expiring on December first, twenty twenty five.
Go move.
Second.
Heard Councilwoman Wagner, seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's reappointment of Mark Travella as a regular member. Of the Co-Memorial Park Committee for a five-year term expiring on January first, twenty twenty six.
So moved.
Second, Rubino.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rubino, um questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor's reappointment of Mary. I think I have to ask this one to be tabled. I didn't get a chance to confirm Mary Fabel. Um, so can I have a motion to table ten? So. I I heard Councilman Waldron, I heard Councilwoman Ruette, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Alright. We'll bring that one back next, in a couple of weeks. Alright, that is it for the um uh board appointments. Um moving right into item eleven, um as per the request of um the council members. Um, we have asked Tim Moore from Blue House Group. To um give us a brief presentation of um the work that he's been doing over the last several weeks with us. Um, Rista, did you want to um do a quick introduction or do you want to just turn this over to Tim?
Um, just a quick, a quick introduction, um as you all know, we had Blue House come. And look at our downtown and different sites that we can activate. I've been working closely with uh Tim over the past uh month or so on um. Hit the work that he's been doing and we've um, I'm excited for you to see the draft presentation he has. So I'll just turn it right over to him and have him um go through that for you.
Awesome, thanks, Rista, uh good evening, Council and Mayor, nice to uh, nice to finally see you guys on Zoom. Uh I think contrary to your previous proposals that you just viewed. We're have a few more graphics that are a little more exciting compared to uh the nor- the typical numbers that you see. So I will uh share my screen with you guys if that's okay? Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Awesome. Alright, so uh this is uh kind of the lead in to Express Torington Phase One. That we began about two months ago. See if I can scroll through there. Sorry about that, hold on. See if I can share it appropriately, sorry, might have to back out of that. Okay, so. It's just not, not moving forward for me. Does everybody have this? Rista, do you share this with them already?
No, I don't think that the, no, the council didn't.
I can pull it up and share it, hold, hold on.
Yeah, if you can do that, that'd be great, sorry, I'm just having an issue.
So maybe while I'm doing that, if you want to talk about some of the work that you've been doing today and now we're gonna pull it up.
Awesome, no, I appreciate that, thanks. Um, so essentially, we started working with the city about two months ago. Uh with overall goals of promoting available retail space in the area. Activating and promoting public space, promoting and supporting new housing in the area. Creating a downtown fabric that connects various assets in the district. Uh increasing pedestrian traffic and sparing new business development were the initial overall goals. And the goals of Phase One were to identify potential activation sites. Identify relevant stakeholders in the district. Authentically engage with stakeholders about the district and set outcomes for each space as it relates to improving downtown engagement and walkability. So to achieve the desired goals of Phase One. Um I worked very closely with Rista and Economic Development Department to identify relevant stakeholders in the district. Over the course of the past months, we've connected with local stakeholders via email, phone and in-person meeting. Um, some of my most meaningful meetings were were with Steve Temkin and the Historical Society. I spent numerous hours at this Historical Society viewing uh Torington through the years. And some initial drawings that were done in the nineteen seventies. That really helped reaffirm and affirm what the concept for downtown uh should be and what it was intended to be. Um in previous renderings. And then uh Steve Temkin had taken me, graciously taken me through almost all of his properties downtown and introduced me to. All of his uh tenants. So we we definitely spent a number of hours together, uh which I'm very grateful for. Um in addition to our conversations, uh we biked, walked and uh drove the area on multiple occasions under varying conditions. Uh to better understand the target areas, opportunities and challenges. The perspectives and observations that we gathered have allowed us to establish outcomes. Uh for the spaces selected as they relate to perceptions, observations uh to the engagement and walkability of downtown. Does anybody have any questions uh so far?
Yeah.
No. Um and identifying the sites, we were, we focused on three types of interventions. Uh we looked for underutilized outdoor space. So these locations service spaces that encourage chance interactions between businesses, residents and guests. Um, an example of that space would be Franklin Plaza, some of the alleys we discussed um in a previous meeting. Uh when you're voting on it, the exciting, the exciting fabric of the town that is, can be undiscovered to uh. To people that kind of take it for granted. And we looked at space suitable for public art. Um, public art is a staple creative placemaking which can animate. Public and private spaces while improving local business viability and public safety while bringing diverse people together. Um, it's also a great way to move people between anchors. And we'll discuss anchors in a moment. And then we looked at vacant indoor space for temporary use. Uh temporary use in vacant spaces is a great way to encourage entrepreneurship by establishing proof of concept. Um, it's one thing that I do often in the towns I I work in. Um, basically, we use that as, as a glue. When we walk into maybe a downtown or a neighborhood and will notice that something should be there, but it's not. We start to experiment with with what we think would fill that gap. Um, when the process is guided, it can lead to an intentional and articulated experience for the end user by the implement implementation of triangulation. And uh you'll hear me talk about triangulation a few times in the presentation. Uh triangulation is when we place something um, an amenity next to an amenity that amplifies their use. So if you had a hot dog stand and we put a soda vendor next to it. You're probably gonna get more business together than you would. soda vendor next to it, you're probably going to get more business together than you would otherwise apart. Each of these services serve a unique purpose in attracting individuals downtown and providing a more cohesive downtown fabric. In identifying the sites, we began a concept to identify existing assets and triangulating around them. In this, our goal is to identify three points or amenities that would encourage social interaction and increase the likelihood that existing assets near them would be used more frequently. The three points that we chose were Franklin Plaza in the south, Railroad Square in the west, and the Torrington Historical Society in the north. The reason that we chose these locations is that we really wanted to encompass downtown and extend people's walks. So if we were at Co-Park and we saw Franklin Plaza, we could start to create a path down Main Street. And if we wanted to walk up to the new brewery, we don't want the brewery to be the last stop on our path, which causes us to stretch that a little bit further to Railroad Square. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thanks. So you see the triangly, triangulation points that we're viewing right now to kind of give you how, an idea of how everything falls together. And where the businesses are, are enveloped in that triangle. And the idea behind this was that if I were walking, what, what paths am I going to take? We, we'll, we start to discuss paths and anchors essentially. And we go on to existing anchors. We use Co-Park, the library, Five Points. Really Five Points Corner, the downtown restaurants, which are scattered between the Warner area, the Five Points area. Really, the kids play toothpick corner, what I called it, in the East Main Street corridor. The Nutmeg Conservatory, the Warner, the YMCA, and Bad Dog Brewing, which although just open, is going to be a destination near downtown. And then we looked at potential intervention sites on the next slide, which are Franklin Plaza, the ninety-eight Main Street Alley, Railroad Square, and the Torrington Historical Society. The reason Torrington Historical is put as an underutilized outdoor space is its walk from downtown is just a little more than I think most people would take. I think when they're near downtown, from my observation, they're probably stopping around the Warner. While the Historical Society is a destination for visitors, it's not something you might necessarily stroll into from your downtown if you're out walking. We looked at places suitable for public art, which were the main and East Main Street intersection, the Yankee Peddler Walls towards the back, and the fifteen Water Street pass-through, which connects Water Street to kind of the back parking lot there, which is a curious little pass-through. And then we looked at vacant indoor space for temporary use, which included the downtown partnership spaces, the Yankee, Yankee Peddler Retail Space, the Warner Retail Space, and ninety-seven Main Street. So the first outdoor space we looked at was Franklin Plaza. It's a great example of strategic placemaking. What we mean with strategic placemaking, and that was, it was put there with intent from us, almost a municipal city experience, and that's awesome foresight. A lot of cities and towns are starting to do that now, and you guys were ahead of the curve. When I first got to Torrington, it was, it was there and I was excited about it. It serves as a, as an accessible and scenic location that will create pedestrian access to the Penrose Development and serve as public gathering space for individuals. From our opinion, has the best chance to remain relevant with the following interventions. Infrastructure, so the addition of temporary and or permanent infrastructure such as wifi, tables and umbrellas to induce, induce additional uses, uses. The umbrellas, per the conversations I've had downtown, in, in my experience, even in, in the winter, is that it's not going to offer a lot of shade in the summer. And if we want people to utilize that, that plaza the way it's intended to be used, we're going to have to generate shade somewhere. And then the tables, the combination of the tables and the umbrellas, make it more inviting from the street. So even if people aren't using it, we're planting the seed that people should be using it. We've had success with that in Hartford, and it's normally one of the first recommendations I make to other towns when we're activating space. And the secondary intervention is programming. The plaza definitely needs consistent programming to develop it as a destination. When most people think of downtowns and where they're going, it has to be a place where there's, there's something definitely going on. The last thing you want to do is drive to a destination and, and not have something there, whether it's music, or a farmer's market, or games, or really anything. It just, it's very important that it's consistent and predictable programming on that plaza. Then we have a graphic of, of what that corner would be like if it were activated with tables. This was a, a winter activation that we photoshopped over, obviously. But you can imagine how driving by and seeing that would, would motivate you to get out of your car and, and see what was going on. And then leading into the plaza, we activated the alleyway going in to draw people in from the East Main Street side also. So that's alleyway on the side of, uh, of Bocce's. And this was an activation that they did in Edmonton called the White Ave Alley. It was featured in City Lab, and it's a very inexpensive activation that brings in local art in the form of, this was chalk initially, which they painted over, and then our garden boxes. So to draw you in, uh, draw the interest in down the block, down that corridor. The next area was Elliot Main Street, the Elliot ninety-eight Main. This was one of my favorite secrets downtown when I was walking downtown. It's a great area for tactical intervention. It's location on Main Street and high visibility provide the ability to pique the curiosity of pedestrians and commuters alike. So if you're driving down Main Street and we programmed the entry to it appropriately, you're, you're going to do a double take, and that will likely cause you to park. What I thought was interesting about it is that the three leads to abundance of parking in the back. And the first thing that came to mind were international markets that fill alleyways. I thought that'd be an interesting intervention to use there. The concept that we use for it was the Common Edge model. Common Edge Quick Overview is an intervention that we're branding out that we can bring to other cities. We have an indoor and an outdoor model. And it's set to work with local makers that give them an in-store experience through our platform, which we bring in all of the retail equipment that needed. We help them with merchandising. We, uh, help them build their brand and do brand launches. So it's, it's really targeted to small to mid-sized businesses that need more exposure. We also add them onto our website, so if they don't have an internet platform, they can use ours. And the sister of that is Common Edge Market, which is the outdoor version of that, where we use a space frame model that comes out of Baltimore. And that will be, uh, if you scroll down, you go to the Common Edge Market Outdoor Platform. One more page. Yeah. So this was developed to help combat COVID. So it allows you to space out and, and basically illustrate an experience for the vendors that are there. It provides you the flexibility to offer food, merchandising, and seating along with art in, in target areas. The construction of it is pretty small or pretty, pretty simple. It's four by fours and two by fours. The cost to build this is about ninety dollars for each one, and they're reusable. They can be painted bright colors. In terms of intervention and cost, it's very useful, and then you can break them down to store them. Continuing our walk down the street, we go to Torrington Historical Society. The grounds make an ideal location for outdoor interventions. Our initial concept was to collaborate with the Historical Society to get more people there, to support them. I fell in love with the space when I was there, indoor and outdoor. It's just such, so much knowledge available and how, how they upkeep the building is, is remarkable. What we thought we would do is do a monthly or weekly wine garden. A lot of towns have, have beer gardens, which are interesting, but we thought that collaborating with local vineyards that are on the wine trail and local restaurants, we could produce a series of outdoor wine gardening experiences that would draw people down the street further than they would typically walk. Railroad Square, uh, so the westernmost location, this is more of my alley. It's a, an opportunistic space. It's probably a space that most people wouldn't think of, of walking to right now because you would have walked up Water Street, past most of the businesses, past the art galleries, and end up in this area that's really ripe for redevelopment. So the, the goal of this type of activation is to draw interest in development to that area. Its location outside of downtown gives us the ability to get a little interesting. So initially, we're thinking that we would use converted shipping containers, which can be used for a myriad of things, including outside fitness studios, pop-up restaurants, art installations. They're flexible, they're relatively inexpensive, and they're easily transportable, which makes them useful for temporary uses. The other use that we thought about was a food truck park. So once again, we're just taking space that needs to be filled with something to make the walking experience better and, and connect other points downtown. So if you're going to the brewery, you're more likely to go across the street to this and have a shared experience as opposed to the brewery being a dead end. The next steps for bringing the outdoor spaces to life is to further understand what people want in these locations. So this is more of a public outreach move. Now that we've identified the spaces, we really want to connect with the community and say, okay, we've identified these locations. How would you use this, this place and what would you like to see there? Do you want to see murals? Do you want to see wifi? Do you want to see movies on the plaza? And really start to engage with them more. Then we check out where our, our objectives meet theirs. We decide what strategy, strategies we're going to use and implement the strategies, and then we measure our results. We move on to public art. Public art is very important to Torrington because you guys have so many creative facilities there. Between Five Points, the Warner, and Nutmeg, you, you're very fortunate to have, have the art institutions that you have there. We chose Main and East Main Street intersection because it's really the gateway from Litchfield and the gateway from Route Eight coming down into your city. So if we provided public art, people are going to feel a little more accepted and a little more excited about coming into the community at that time. As it stands, intersection is, is a little large right now. It's a little daunting to cross. And initially, we looked at ways to make that crossing a little more friendly. So if you were on Franklin Plaza as a pedestrian or coming from the old Franklin Plaza, you would cross the street into Main, uh, into Main Street. The first thing we tried is a tactical pedestrian bump out. Pedestrian bump out, to be explained, is, is a temporary use where we, we extend the sidewalks with paint in normal boughyards. It could, a boughyard can be anything. We could do water-filled buckets, you could do jersey barriers. So we're returning more of the sidewalk or more of the roads to pedestrians essentially, to shorten the crossing distance. So you can see the highlighted field. This is an example of, of what it would look like. It's in line with your current East Main Street study. So removing that double right-hand lane shortens the crossing distance and makes it a little more pedestrian-friendly without doing anything permanent to it. It's been highlighted in the pedestrians, in your, in your study, in your roadway study, that they, they plan on removing that anyways and going into a, into a single lane rotary there. So this would be a test of that concept essentially, of one part of that concept. The intersections of the city define the social life. And, and cities across the world, intersections are, are used to basically illustrate the social life of the neighborhood. If you can control the intersection, you basically dictate what's going on in the neighborhood. An intersection that's controlled by cars is going to portray a downtown controlled by cars. One that's controlled by pedestrians and businesses is obviously going to give off the, the idea that it's, it's more pedestrian-friendly and more of a social scene. So we did a little, a little drawing of what the pedestrian bump out could look like if we put tables and chairs there. So now instead of arriving at the intersection and it's pavement and a kind of cold storefront for the most part, you have a little more pedestrian interaction on that corner. And then combined with Franklin Plaza, now you have two corners that you've won over. The creative public art gateway, again, was creating a visual transition from Co-Park into downtown, which was a concern that was voiced early on, that when people were at events at Co-Park, they weren't coming into downtown. They were turning away and going back to Litchfield or other towns. So if we visually transition them into coming downtown because it seems interesting or that things may be, be going on, we could keep more of that, that traffic and create a stickiness as opposed to them returning to their, their hometowns. Downtown has multiple public art opportunities. We highlighted the Yankee Peddler, some alleyways, and those are on public and private property. The goal, the key to public art is to really have it be a balance between being on private property and sponsored by private property owners and then also having the city make use of, of the opportunities that, that it has. The next steps for bringing art to these spaces is to understand what type of art people would want to see. Again, we do that through public outreach. We work closely with CT Murals. We partner on a lot of projects. He's basically part of the Blue House Group. And he works with locating artists, assisting with funding, figuring what the community wants, typically through surveys and conversations, walking tours of the spaces to, to really see what, what people would expect to see there in the community. Again, strategies we use to get there, such as where the funds are coming from, how we're connecting with people, and then measuring our results, typically through social media, shares, press, and genuine conversation with people. Any questions so far? I know I'm covering a lot and going fast.
So, um, yeah, questions. Right, I guess, I guess that's it. You know, and the only thing that I would add to, to complement or to support, I should say, some of the outcomes of Tim's recommendations or what he's certainly identified as opportunities here in the city of Torrington is when we talk about placemaking, uh, and I think Franklin Plaza is a perfect example of that. Franklin Plaza and Patterson Park. Even though that, that, that space was activated, for the lack of a better word, in November, this little strip of property, this strip of road along the Nagatech River on the backside of those businesses has garnered a tremendous amount of attention. We have, um, the Nutmeg Conservatory was down there before snow flew. And they were doing a, a little flash mob, or yeah, flash mob, I guess they call it, down there just to test drive the space to see how it might work for them doing some outdoor performances. Heather Rams from Sanctuary Yoga is already seeking permission or authority to bring a regular Thursday evening farmer's market to that location. Our Northwest Arts Council is already working on a summer arts program. We have Adelaide Pumpkin, who is a musician and artist who's taken up some office space on Main Street, did a test run of busking in Franklin Plaza. And for those of you who aren't familiar with what busking is, it's just a pop-up musical event, you know? And they went down there with a speaker and a microphone and a guitar. went down there with a speaker and a microphone and a guitar and um they, by their own admission, were shocked with the number of people that stopped to listen, sat down and enjoyed the performance and cars that were driving by um and pulled over into parking spaces to get out and listen. So I think those are the types of, um, that's the anecdotal type of information that that we're looking at. So when somebody like Tim comes in and says, you know, let's activate these spaces, you know, this alleyway or this pocket park. I do believe these will be game changers for um generating that foot traffic. That's going to support some of our restaurants and the um entertainment venues, Kids Play Museum. Um, as we come out of the pandemic. So I just wanted to say thank you to Tim and Rista for putting together a very quick analysis of um what you've seen. Um, and I truly appreciate having an outside perspective, a younger outside perspective. On what we have, because for those of us that grew up here, we pass by that alley every day. Some of us for the past sixty years and never really looked at it through the lens that you've looked at it. So I greatly appreciate it.
And we do, we do just have a couple more um slides about, so that was really focused on all the outdoor stuff. Um, and a couple of slides on some of the indoor spaces that he looked at, so.
Okay.
Tim, if you want to just go through those.
Yeah, so uh indoor spaces is is it's kind of my realm, uh, right now at least. Uh, and we're creating new concepts that that really, they don't look temporary. Uh, they they look like you're you're in a real store and that's going to be a permanent store. Um, every temporary space lets us test the concept. Um, every temporary space is an opportunity for downtown. They're great places for entrepreneurs to springboard their ideas and uh we've become really good at doing them with little capital. We 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 operate pretty lean. And have exciting concepts. So temporary spaces in general. In in downtown, they like to be around other temporary spaces. Uh, Main Street's positioned well to to utilize their vacant storefronts for a number of reasons. One is that you have high pedestrian traffic due to the service providers you have there. You have lots of restaurants and cafes. You have the cultural institutions. Uh, so when the Warner opens back up or Nutmeg is doing doing a play. You're you're already going to have tons of traffic down there, which will support most new ventures. And you have proximity to the major intersections, so it's easily accessible. Um, another thing that I didn't list there is that you have landlords that are ready to 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 work with you. Um, well, some downtowns lack that. You could have space that sit vacant forever. And there there's a gap between the people that want to use this space and and actually getting to a decision maker to pull the trigger on using a space. I met with Steve and discussed a few locations that he had. And he was ready to embrace the concepts with open open arms, which is is really good to hear. Um, it's nice when you can go into a downtown and know that you're going to have landlords that are going to work with you and property owners that are going to work with you to to really unlock the value of the properties that they have. So the benefits for temporary use are new and positive image for for location, creation of identity. Increased public awareness of the site, which can go on to support uh new businesses moving in and around it. And then the prevention of vandalism and decay, which is often overlooked. When a space is is occupied, it's less likely to be tagged um with unwanted graffiti or art. Uh, garbage doesn't build up as much. The storefront is taken care of. Everything that you have when you have vacancy almost goes away when you have any type of occupant, even in the temporary capacity. Uh, the other things to consider for designated designated temporary use locations are facade improvements. So the operator should have plans to uh upkeep the facade or work with the ownership to brighten up the outdoor paint and lighting. Uh, you want the spaces to look ready to be occupied. Now, I know as a small business owner and haven't done lots of these, sometimes you can walk by a space as a perfect location. And it just doesn't feel, you don't get the warm fuzzies about it. And sometimes just because you're not seeing around the little bits of garbage that are there or the chip paint or the the dirty windows. Uh, so a little, a little bit in that can go a long way. And then Torrington's also very fortunate that a lot of the storefronts that have um awnings, they have awnings and deep windows and places where you can actually do a storefront activations. I know we get worried when we talk about placing seating outside of stores because sometimes you don't want seating. But sometimes you do want seating. Sometimes it's important that somebody is walking by and they linger a little bit longer and that can be done with planters, benches. Um, there's a really good program done in New Jersey called Storefront Mastery. And they basically tour um the major cities in New Jersey and and some in New York. Uh, the neighborhoods and highlight storefronts that just get it right. And sometimes it's as easy as having benches outside and a cute little window display that will get people to stop while they're walking by and peer inside. And it's those little chance interactions that go really far. So we highlighted some of the temporary use opportunities in the downtown. Uh, we did uh Yankee Peddler, we did the downtown partners property. And then we did the one next to Ida's Bridal Bridal. Um, and I know he was looking for a tenant. His space is a little deep. But I I think the fact that the storefronts are there and he's willing to work with people is huge. Uh, and you guys are you super lucky. You're just, I'm I'm jealous. I wish we had your property owners in other towns I'm doing work in. Because uh they're just excited to get to get people in their storefronts. And I think that means a lot for your small businesses too. Um, and aspiring businesses because you guys with the right program can have the storefronts full with new life and and people inviting their friends and family down. So some select concepts for the temporary use came out of uh the Common Edge model. And what we are hoping to do is that our top performers, if we could find a space for the Common Edge Market and Common Edge Wares, would be the top performers out of our market. Would take part in a Torrington Connects program and get a potential location in the Yankee Peddler. Like apologies for that typo, I just noticed it. Um, in the Yankee Peddler space. Um, that way it's gonna pair good performers, people that show promise with hopefully white box storefronts that would be available in Yankee Peddler, uh, depending on how the uh the reuse of that building goes. And then you can also launch a bricks and clicks campaign to provide uh them with an online platform to sell their wares. It's a really good way of of growing the brand of of local makers. And it really reaffirms commitment to small businesses in the in the community that they're getting supported. And then the other aspect to look at were one-day pop-up shops. Uh, we do this a lot in Hartford right now. We've done a one-day pie shop, pop-up pie shop that runs for seven hours and they come with a pre preset, pre preset amount of pies. Um, and they typically sell out normally by one or two o'clock. Uh, we've done a house plant shop. And because you have people that live in apartments that might not have access to house plants now that's near downtown. And we've also done cupcake shops in West Hartford. Uh, which normally sell very quickly also. And these one-day brand activations allow new businesses to test their model in your downtown. So they have established audience. And uh, just really get people excited about being downtown. A lot of times we just need to give residents and guests a reason to come out and they they will, they will. So the next steps with this are to identify which spaces are available for temporary use. Uh, that requires connecting with the landlords, which is where we're already kind of in the process of doing. See what people want to see in the locations. Uh, that's a quick survey. Uh, we try to corral people so they don't have too many um wants on that list. Figure out what the objectives are. The strategy is to draw new different businesses. So typically we would reach out to uh, the extended community Windsor Locks, uh, New Hartford. Maybe up to Collinsville and see if there are any small businesses up there that want to try out being downtown. And then we measure our results basically in terms of sales following and uh social media shares. This is our tying it together. So the blue is kind of where we are right now. Uh, we talked about the community being expert, which is why we really want to include them. Um, in the next steps, want to create places, not designs. Uh, so we really want to think of of what we're trying to evoke from the people that are that are coming there. Anytime we can create an attachment, it's very important and it it really builds public sentiment. We want to look for partners, which in uh my experience has been the most rewarding and challenging part. It's where a lot of towns miss it and a lot of individual people that try to do uh this aspect of of place making. Is that you want to leverage resources. So whether it's the Historical Society, uh, which when we talked, we talked about Ski's Diner. And where they wanted to place that and kind of their their long-term goals for that. And then we talked about the Container Park, like those are the types of of conversations you want to be having with partners. You put things out there into the universe and figure out how to make it a reality. Uh, starting with Petunia's Letter Quicker Cheaper, it's a way of of operating lean and really responding to what the public wants without a huge capital outlay. And then triangulating, um, which is making sure we're placing things next to each other that amplify our existing assets. And then that that's it on my side. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to uh to take them or expand on any any concerns.
Thank you, Tim.
So the floor is I think, you know, it's a lot of information late at night after lots of numbers, but Tim. Um, I appreciate your enthusiasm and don't think the lack of comments or questions um isn't excited about it. Um, the the alleyway that um, I don't know if you ever were, well, you're too young, but there was a umbrella art project in Santa Barbara, California. And when I lived out there, it was um really pretty spectacular what they did, you know, along the, you know, sort of the mountains of uh Santa Barbara. It was pretty cool. So seeing that alley with the umbrellas made me think of that. I know they've had some issues with that project over the years, but um, but either way, it's it's exciting. Um, I love your enthusiasm. So uh, it's a lot of information to absorb um on a cold winter night to think about umbrellas is uh inspiring, but um, thank you.
What about snow murals? We could do snow murals through through the thing. Oh, yeah, tons of snow out there. We can put in the piles. We'd have urban sledding at the park. Um, no, you you guys are very lucky because you have you have such a core of artists. So as soon as we start to extend the locations to the artists, I'm sure there's going to be tons of enthusiasm and talented people coming through. Um, to to make all those activations much easier.
I want to thank you, Tim, for reaching out to Steve Temkin because he was delighted. We were talking about that this weekend. A lot of those ideas that you had were some he had even thought about before. So to get that reinforcement was really great. And um, he's ready to move forward with some ideas. So thank you very much.
Well, thank, thank you. I'm meeting with Pete or with Steve uh later this week, depending on when the snow thaws. And what I found unique is that when I was at the Historical Society, the original nineteen seventy drawings were commissioned by his uncle, I believe. And they they highlighted how pedestrian-oriented downtown was was going to be. And I was amazed and it was reaffirming to me because everything I saw when I was walking through downtown existed in the nineteen seventies as a concept. And I was like, well, this makes me feel a lot better because sometimes I get scared that I'm a dreamer. Uh, but to see it had already drawn out was was nice.
Well, and you know, he's been a strong supporter of pop-ups and short-term rentals. He's always been able to go the extra mile if somebody wants to try something. Five Points Gallery was a temporary three-month gallery. That um, he paid the utilities, gave them free space for three months, and we see how that grew. Rachel Kelly started and when she was a junior in high school with a temporary three-month space that went to a six-month space that went to a nine-month space, and now she's there seven years. So we're very excited about it. So thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, Councilman Kevin O.
Uh, first, Tim, very nice presentation. I didn't know who the Blue House Group was until, actually, I didn't understand who you were until this very presentation. So um, I am impressed. Uh, first, just a a background. Who is the Blue? Are you Blue House Group or are you part, is that a larger group and you're one of the directors or?
So I'm principal of Blue House Group. I started Blue House Group in twenty fifteen. Um, I was working in real estate. I was working for a real estate developer. And they were out in New York and I was working on one of their assets in Hartford. And we sold the asset to the YMCA. It was a a luxury gym that we had built in the basement. And I I helped with the rebranding of it and remodeling and we had a successful exit. And in the process of doing that, I realized that the reputation of my, the real estate developer I was working for wasn't that good. And I really didn't understand why, um, based on my experience. So I started to read the papers and I was learning about gentrification. And I got motivated to make sure that what we were doing in terms of real estate development was also benefiting the towns that we were in. And that led me to really do a deep dive in economic development as a whole. Um, workforce retraining, um, financial analysis. Uh, credit analysis for new businesses coming in and entrepreneurship. I end up going to University of Oklahoma and completing their uh they have a Economic Development Institute that's basically a two-year institute in economic development where we traveled to cities around the country. Um, for about a week at a time and study what's going on in the cities and converse with other economic development professionals about uh economic development practice and whatnot. And then I came back and I started to work back in real estate, uh, but really wanted to bring home a lot of what I was witnessing in other areas back to Connecticut. Uh, I got tired of leaving Connecticut and seeing all these amazing things and being like, why not? Why not Connecticut? Why not Hartford? Why can't we do this? Uh, and realized that I need to bridge a gap between the real estate developer and the municipalities and then kind of found the place making in the midst of all that.
Okay, so um, let me, you touched on it at the very end of this, and this is more of a just a fact finding for me, Mayor, or maybe Tim, you have the answer. I don't know. I mean, clearly, I know this has been studied a great deal by a lot, a lot of people prior to me asking this question, but everything you're talking about, you know, in terms of the the pedestrian uh focus of downtown Torrington. Why, Mayor, I know we've done studies. Is it not, is it just simply way too logistically complicated to close off those two blocks, you know, from from Water Street to uh whatever, you know, St. Francis, those two down, those two Main Street blocks? And literally make that a overtime, a permanent feature of the city and make that just a walking two blocks? And the reason I, if there are reasons why, then there are reasons why, and I'll get off. It's just, my brother uh does a lot of this work in California. And when I was talking to him about this proposal, about what you were proposing, Tim, you know, his first reaction was, well, you got to close those two streets. I mean, that's, that is what we would do. And, you know, maybe it's a buzz, but you do that and and you will immediately just so tremendously accelerate all the things you are pointing to. So what is the, what is that? Where is that, Mayor? Is that just a dead, dead at the um
It it's a state road. It's a, it's a state highway, actually. Um, logistically, you couldn't, we couldn't close that down.
No way that that could happen, huh?
Yeah. No, there really isn't. Um, and you know
Precedent for the state doing this in other places to spur economic development?
Well, yeah, and Hartford, actually, I think, um, I think Tim actually was involved. That was Pratt Street, wasn't it, um, Tim?
Yes.
That's a municipal road, though, not a state road, correct?
Right, right. So what I can add about that is that and what's funny is because I ended up on Pratt Street and I'm I'm not for it being closed. Um, because about eighty, I want to say eighty-seven percent of pedestrian throughways end up going back to be to being uh open to traffic if they, if they close off before there's enough demand. So what we need to do is build the demand downtown. And how you would do that is there's a street across from the Merz Building.
Okay.
Uh, that intersection, if you close off that street, then you can circulate up your Main Street, back behind the Temkin Buildings. And then end up on Water Street and without affecting traffic in the way you would if you closed a straight road. Then as you grew the capacity, then you could start to figure out other type of interactions to really work on the Water Street side. But that would be like the easiest way to go about that right now. And as they were originally drawn in the seventies, most of the Temkin Buildings have backside access. So you could essentially um not even really need Main Street access. You can have pedestrian thoroughfare through the back and still have access to the storefronts.
I just want to add too, one of the things with Water Street, because we do have a fire department on there, so we need to make sure that they can get out and and go both directions. So that would make it difficult.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's it for me, Mayor.
No, no, good questions. So, um, I mean, obviously, there's um a lot for us to digest. I think that Rista and Tim and I will probably sit down and look at some of these ideas um and make sure that we're keeping those connections with the property owners. Um, that one alleyway um that um that Tim identified is actually private property. Um, so you know, that's another opportunity for us to work with the property owners, just help them identify how perhaps these spaces uh might impact the reuse of their buildings. So um, a little more work to do and next steps. Um, and we'll report back to the council with what we find. So, did you want to add anything, Rista or Tim?
No, the only thing I was just gonna add is just kind of just exactly what you said, that, you know, I think as we finalize this report, we'll we'll come up with a proposal for taking these ideas to the next step and then we'll bring that before the council again. Um, and and kind of keep you up to date as what we're doing, how we're moving forward.
Great. And thank you again, Tim. Great presentation then.
Thank you, Mary. And thank you, thank you, Council, for your time. I appreciate it. I know it's late.
All right, um, let's move into item thirteen. We still have a lot to All right, let's move into item 13. We still have a lot to do on this, on this agenda, and I apologize that it is so jam packed. Item, item 12 on this agenda. Is a presentation. And at the end of the presentation, I will be seeking a vote or a motion from the council. To authorize me to negotiate on behalf of the city regarding. Of online permitting software. So I know that there was some documentation that was provided to the council over the weekend. That was only one perspective and one, one member of a committee that undertook. The investigation on the software. And I, I feel it's really important for us to listen to the entire presentation. And after that, be able to make an informed decision. So I'm not sure, Rista, I think, I think we agreed you were going to kick it off and then everybody else.
So John, do you, are you planning to share the presentation or do you want me to?
It's probably easier if you do because you'll know when to change slides and everything.
Okay. So just give me a second here.
Mayor, I have an iPad that's just not recharging no matter where I plug it in. So if I lose you, I might be coming back on it with my phone. So just.
Thank you.
Okay. Give me one second. I just had to get back to my Zoom meeting. All right, so. Can you see that all right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just going to kick this off. I know it's a lot of information, but we will kind of go through it as we can. About a year and a half ago, we were looking at when we really, when we started writing the Building Healthier Communities Grant. And even before that, we're looking at what can we make for improvements within the city to become more business friendly? How can we attract developers? How can we set ourselves aside from the other 169 towns in Connecticut that we all compete for with business? And so we, you know, we're looking at different economic strategies. One of the things we looked at was CEDUS, which is the Connecticut Economic. Development Agency did a business friendly community rating. And they identified communities that were business friendly. And one of the things that they really did a lot of focus on was. Online permitting and online software that makes it easy for. Developers and to submit permits, streamline permit process and go through that. So we, when we wrote the Building Healthier Communities Grant, we really looked at the permitting enforcement software. We wanted to put that into there. And then we kind of grew, grew it a little bit. We looked at, well, how, how do we want to make this process? What's the best way to do this? We didn't want to just go and get. The cheapest software we could because we really wanted to focus on a product that really met all the needs of the city. And and how can we take this software, get us to the goals that we needed, want them to have and advance the city, really benefit us? And the residents and the businesses coming into here. So with that in mind, the, the goal was to get the best product that met the needs of the city. So we looked at a lot of different things. We started this in February of 2020. Before COVID and we sat down with almost every department in City Hall. The police, the fire, Public Works, purchasing, the Board of Ed assessors, everybody sat down. We had a discussion as to what were all of our needs and we realized that it wasn't just permitting. Software that we needed through the land use departments and the building department, but really it was a much broader. Need throughout the city. We heard from the police department that, you know, they. When they work at night, they get calls and they don't always know what's going on if there's a building enforcement action or land use or fire marshal has an enforcement action. They might not know. They might not know that there's an illegal apartment there. So it really kind of expanded. From there, we decided, we invited everybody, all the different departments to put somebody on this committee. As many people as they wanted, whoever was going to use the surf to use the software to, to be part of the committee. We then decided to do RFQ, which was a request for qualifications. At this time, we did not ask for any fee proposals. We got nine responses and of the nine responses. Six of them both had permitting and enforcement software as well as the asset management software. Because that was something else that came out through meetings that asset management software. Although it was different, it was very important to our staff and to our streamlined approach that we wanted to get to. And. So six had both permitting and enforcement as well as asset management. Two had only asset management and one had only permit and enforcement. Right about the right, well, right before we did the RFQ, COVID hit and. We were all kind of working on this, knowing the importance of this. But it did take a little bit of time to review all of the nine responses. We narrowed those nine responses down to five companies that we then interviewed. They were all, all seemed very decent, kind of would meet our needs. Then we asked those five companies for a fee proposal. After we did the fee proposal, we narrowed it down even further, looking at what, you know, what were we getting for money? What was the best software with the money that was proposed? Then in November, we invited, we narrowed it down even further to three companies. And we asked them to give us demonstrations of their software, which they did. And then in December 2020, they gave us some recommendations. And just so you have an idea of who was on our selection committee, you can see. You know, we had the fire department, the police department, Public Works, land use, building department. And, you know, the, the fire department had three different people, the, the police department had three different people. Because this was so important to their departments. You know, they wanted the people using the software to really chime in and make suggestions and, and identify how would we really use this to the best. Of our ability and make sure that the software that we picked met all of those goals. So throughout this presentation, there's different members of the selection committee that are going to be talking. Going through this, I think, you know, of the selection committee there, we did narrow it down to two selections. The building department. Is in favor of one, but pretty much other than that, everybody on this committee shares these same recommendations. And so at this time, I am going to turn it over to Marty Connor. To talk to you about who would be using the software and kind of the coordination that's going on and how this would help with that process.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I just want to say that this whole COVID thing has shown us how important it is for us to be able to. Have the public be able to access City Hall, our records. How important it is to work with builders, developers. And they're used to, in a lot of cases, working with town halls who have strong permitting systems. Have the ability to use credit cards to take payment. So I think we've learned a lot going through the process of what we can do. And we now know how important it is to have a good system. So we will be, certainly the building department will be a major user of this. They'll be able to process their building and mechanical permits, do code enforcement actions, plan reviews. They'll be able to issue their demo permits. The beauty will be, it'll be much easier for them to work with my department with permits that my commissions. Issue the planning and zoning, wetlands, zoning board of appeals. Jeremy Leifert will be jumping in in a moment. He's our assistant planner, zoning and wetlands officer. It'll be very important for him in issuing zoning permits. Working with our blight officer in zoning, wetlands and blight enforcement actions. In our plan reviews, being able to communicate with applicants, communicate with builders. Let them know where they're at in the plan review system. The fire department, right now, everything is done by paper. People have to walk around to the different departments. They have to leave the building to go to the fire department to, to meet with the fire marshal. We can be able to do so much of this work using the software. So it'll help the fire marshal with his plan reviews, his fire marshal inspections, his code enforcement actions. And the open burn permits. The police department, they're excited about the ability to merge software that'll include pistol permits. Raffle permits, pedaling permits. Track their parking tickets. It's going to be very important very soon that we have overnight parking permits and know who has those. Because we are having people move downtown that need to be able to use our public parking spaces. Public Works, a road cop permit, sewer discharge permits, enforcement actions. The hauler permits that they do, the MSW permits. And then, as Rista said, and Ray Drew will tell you. And Alice can chime in as well, the asset management software is going to be very important. There'll be online public inquiry complaints that can be done remotely. People don't have to come in and file something in paper. It'll be automatically forwarded to the appropriate department. And we can share information much better than we can now. We have a very, very archaic system. And honestly, we use way too much paper. That, that's, you know, that's what, what I, you know, what I see in the, the major benefits that we're gonna have when, when we move on.
Great. Jeremy, do you want to go through some of the permitting enforcement? Is he still there?
I saw Jeremy on. He was, he was in front of City Hall a moment ago.
We can't hear you, Jeremy.
Does someone have to unmute him? John?
It says he's unmuted.
No.
Try again, Jeremy.
Well, in the interest of time, if he can, he can jump on.
Let me jump in because clearly. We know that this is going to improve customer service. We already have people that would like to put to. Fill out permits online. Know that businesses want to be able to do things from their place of work. We know contractors would love to be able to do permitting from their place of business. We know that, that this will streamline our workflow. We can improve communications between departments. Once again, we don't have citizens walking all around Town Hall with pieces of paper. We know we can increase our productivity with this kind of software. The goals that we had when, when we all got together and we talked about what we wanted to be able to do. We wanted online applications and fees that could be submitted by the public. We wanted residents and developers to be able to have the ability to track approvals. And be able to schedule inspections remotely. We want plan review comments and photos readily available to the applicant and city departments. Right now, we go out, if we have to take photos for applications or for enforcement actions, you got to go back to the office. You got to load them onto your computer. You know, we, with this, this permitting software. The photos that we take, the comments and the plan reviews and the notes that are in the field would be available to all the departments. So be able to access permits and enforcement files in the field. When you're out doing inspections and you see a new roof going on or you see work going on, it'll be very easy to access the system. Make sure that the right permitting permits are in place. If there are no permits. You could actually stop and help a homeowner or a contractor fill out the permitting. We'd have standardized letters and correspondence that could be automatically generated in the field or the office by our inspectors. The approval process would be more automated based on the permit type. And once again, we'd have the permit tracking and financial reporting. I think Ray's up.
Ray, are you talking about asset management?
Can, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
You know, our residents are counting on us to manage our infrastructure and assets effectively and efficiently deploy. And deploy, deploy our resources efficiently. Asset management functionality provides the capability for us to track and measure really any type of asset. From signs, signals, roads, bridges, sewers, storm pipes, fleet, even our buildings, trees, parks. It, it gives us the cost accounting information, including labor, equipment, materials. And all other costs associated with that asset to capture and determine what the true cost of that asset is to us. So a good asset management system will help us know what assets we have, the condition they're in, and how much they're costing us. It's going to allow us to, you know, monitor our infrastructure performance. Gain enhanced visibility on our spending. Analyze as we capture the data, better to analyze the data and find opportunities to increase and improve efficiencies. Better refine our capital improvement plans and, and measure our return on our investment. I mean, when we're, you know, we, we sink money into our assets, you know. Everything I look at from a cost benefit analysis, you know, what's the return on our investment? Prioritizing projects, developing emergency response plans. You know, developing criticality analysis on our assets. You know, you know, for example, sewers, a sewer that serves on Litchfield Street that serves hospital. Has a higher criticality than, not that they're not all important, it's just that it's a more critical asset. So we need to pay a lot closer attention to it that a sewer that serves the hospital that and. A branch sewer that serves a small residential neighborhood. So the asset management is going to, you know, improve efficiency effectiveness, increase organizational productivity. And, you know, it's a measure of, you know, when we do a project. To extend the asset lifetime and increase the return on our investment. So that's what we're looking for in the asset management program. And we feel that Citizen Serve with their Lucidity, Lucidity platform. Provided us with an exceptional, an exceptional asset management software. Rista?
Thank you. All right, so we went through, we had our two recommendations and I think Chief Towie is going to talk about our two top choices.
Yeah, so this is just a side by side comparison of the, the final two that went through the process, sort of evaluating all those metrics. To just provide an apples to apples comparison between the two. You know, obviously, they both did offer online permitting and enforcement through their, their various platforms. And Central Square was the only one between the two that offered an asset management software solution. Which, like Ray just said, is, we feel is important to have that ability and option moving forward. Citizen Serve is the only one that. Citizen Serve is the only one that has a built in plan review product. But going through, the committee was impressed with the Blue Beam plan review product that can be integrated within Central Square with increased functionality and capabilities. One thing we looked at is Central Square between the two is the only one that had the ability to sort of track time, you know, time and resources per permit or per activity or per process. We thought this was important because it gives us a better idea to sort of judge our resources and make deployment decisions and scheduling and planning activities. Obviously, with some of these, you know, inspections, some may take 15 minutes, some may take hours to complete. So just using a numeric to track the number of inspections doesn't give a a good read on the actual performance or activity that's taking place. It also makes it easier to sort of plan moving forward because you can assign, you know, estimated hours for inspections and make your scheduling assignments based upon that. They both do provide a public portal that would allow permits and payments to be submitted and tracked online. They both allow update files with notes and photos while they're in the field. I will note that Central Square and is further down on the slide. Central Square offers the ability to operate in an offline environment where the inspection and activity can be uploaded prior to so that there's a area that the device is not within cellular range or does not have access to a Wi-Fi connection. They can still upload and do all that work where Citizen Serve does require that LTE or that cellular connection because it's, you need to be online to access that functionality. They both allow plan reviews and staff comments readily available to all users. They both obviously are going to automate the permit review and workflow, which is huge because it really does provide a situation where now not only can the applicant file the initial application online and start that process, they're able to track where that process is. Once they make that application, there can be automated systems that it's going to go to their respective approvals to keep that moving forward. And then as we go through inspections, also offers that same portal where the builder, the developers or residents can sort of track what's the status of their permits and where they are in the process. Both do include data migration. And then last, obviously, we said Central Square was the only one that wasn't able to use LTE in the field. Central Square, you did not need LTE. You could preload and operate offline. And then that would automate, that information would get uploaded to the server when you did get back into a Wi-Fi connection. So, you know, while both products obviously did meet the need of, you know, online permitting and enforcement, I think a majority of the committee felt that with the added of the asset management capabilities and the increased growth with it, Central Square has more potential for building out into additional functionality such as reporting of, you know, for emergency lines down or potholes or, you know, complaint tracking would have the ability to sort of build in some of those systems and automate those other workflows moving forward.
Ray, are you talking a little bit about the cost?
Yeah, so, you know, we looked at, you know, as Rista had indicated, you know, if we had nine respondents, we narrowed it down to five. We got proposals from, we narrowed it down to two. For the cost comparison for the permitting and enforcement portion of the software, you can see that Central Square has a little bit lower annual subscription. This is based upon 26 users, I believe, rest of that is correct number, 26 users. Citizen Serve's a little bit higher. Implementation fee. The thing to note with Central Square is that, you know, one, there is a reduction there if we do both modules, that being the permitting and enforcement as well as the asset management. But the Central Square implementation is a time and material type of setup. So the 136 is a do not exceed. So it depends on, you know, how much we need to use them. Where the Citizen Serve is a fixed fee. You know, additionally, as the chief had indicated, the Citizen Serve requires the LTE ability on the devices. Where the Central Square is kind of, it's a caching system. So if you don't have the internet service while you're out in the field, you can still do the data and then when you get back to internet service, that data is automatically uploaded to the system. It's similar to a program that we use, that we've been using that the chief instituted for disaster preparedness called Crisis Track. Though we don't need to have it out in the field, it caches it. Once we get service, all the data that you inputted out in the field gets uploaded. So with the LTE service requirement with Citizen Serve, with Citizen Serve, there is additional costs associated with that. So that's a kind of a brief cost comparison on the permitting enforcement. There's not really, it's hard to do a cost comparison on the asset management because Citizen Serve didn't offer asset management. On a F way, I know, prior to me getting involved with this project, we were looking at the asset management piece previous to this. And we had looked at a couple of firms, Lucidity from Central Square was one we looked at. We also looked at Cartograph and Dude Solutions. The Cartograph proposal we had gotten had an annual subscription of $44,000. So we can see that the Central Square for the 26 users on an annual basis is less than we had previously gotten for Cartograph. So this is just kind of the cost breakdown for the asset management portion of presented to us from Central Square. So how are we going to pay for it? That's always a tough question, right? So what we budgeted for already, there was a couple things in there. The permitting enforcement from Central Square, as you can see, is 173, 590. That's the annual subscription plus implementation, the asset management portion plus the additional hardware we would need for field mobility. So on our three year budget, Rista's grant, Building Healthier Communities, has $35,000. In last, this current fiscal year, out of our Public Works budget, we budgeted $25,000 for the asset management piece. And so we're proposing, we believe what we have, the $60,000 will carry us through for fiscal year 2021. So in 2021, 22, we would budget the additional 200, potentially. Because remember that Central Square is on a, more on a time and material basis. The 282,000 plus, and then in 22, 23, the annual subscription would be budgeted out of the IT budget. You know, for the 21, 22, you know, if the $60,000 doesn't get us through to 7121, we would look to come back to the board and look for additional funding from continuing. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add to that?
I think you did a good job with the budget summary. And then our last slide before we open into questions, I just kind of wanted to just go over, highlight some of the things I already said and just really, you know, why do we need to do this? Why do we need this software? You know, like I said, we started this before COVID, but now that COVID is part of our life and we're looking at long-term recovery, it's even more important to do it now. We have a lot of small businesses who need to get back on their feet. As we start to recover, we need to make it as business friendly as we can so businesses come to Torrenton and they can do it quickly, they can do it in a cost effective way. But also, I think the expectations post-COVID have changed and they will remain changed. People want to have virtual access to city services. And we've proven that we can provide them. And the software will help us do that even more smoothly. In the event that we ever have something like this again, or City Hall has to be closed, our staff can work remotely and have access to these files. You know, I know that our, particularly our building department, but I'm sure it was through across all departments, that really backed up on the permits because permits were coming in, but there wasn't staff in the building or we couldn't touch the paper, so we had to wait. If we had this software, we wouldn't have gotten that backed up, permits would have still been processed. There wouldn't have the need for overtime or anything else that kind of goes with that. Allowing credit card payment, again, people don't like to touch cash, especially in a COVID world. So having that no paper, online application work is great. We do want to, I'm just going to keep going back to this, but encourage economic development. You know, as we compete with other communities, time is money to developers. And also, sending their contractors to City Hall costs them money. So if we can have them submit things right online, it saves them money and makes it more efficient for them. You know, currently, what, you know, now if there's something that needs to be changed on a plan or a new letter we need, they have to mail it in. It takes a couple of days for it to be FedEx stamped, signed in. This would allow all of that to be done right online and the same day as reviews are getting out, as soon as they're able to submit those change plans. Now streamline permitting, you heard Mari talk about, somebody comes to City Hall, they go to the building department, they gotta walk to the assessors office, they gotta walk up to the third floor to the land use office, they have to go to the engineering department, sometimes they have to leave City Hall, go to Torrenton Area Health and to the fire department. It could take a better part of a day to get a simple permit that really can just be submitted online. We can review it and the review process goes in and when the departments are ready to approve it, they can. One of the things that, you know, the software that we have now is really just a database of our permits. We can go in and look it up. But this software will really help us automate some of those approvals. So, you know, if you need, usually zoning is the first approval that you need. So in this software system, what you can do, it will automatically send out the approval to those different departments. And the building department or the fire department will be notified when the zoning office approves it and they'll know that they can go ahead and move on their approval. It's not manual, it's all automatic and just those departments automatically get that notification, which is just so much streamlined. And the applicant can also review their permit process that's going through the process. So they'll know if they need to get something to a specific, excuse me, specific department and where it's being held up and for what reasons. And, you know, staff productivity, you know, I think, you know, as Ray said, with asset management, you know, it's our job to make sure that we're all working efficiently and doing the most that we can. This will help us do that better. I think we all strive for that, but this will allow us to schedule inspections. We could set how much time an inspection will take on average and we all know how to schedule it. Somebody can request an inspection online and we'll know what inspectors have the availability for that inspector.
Sorry, I just jumped in. I think the overall theme is, you know, for us to buy to
We can have that information.
So it looks like Rista's froze up a little bit.
Yeah, if I might. Everybody has stuff. Can you not hear me?
Yeah, you're freezing up on us. You're getting a little choppy.
So I can stop there and go to, if anybody has any questions.
Good questions.
This is Councilman Rubino.
Yes.
Question, you had City Serve at Central Square. Was Civic Plus in there?
Civic Plus did not respond to the RFQ.
Okay, because me being in the construction field, we do a lot of permits online. And Civic Plus seems to be one of the top contenders for a lot of permitting for a lot of cities and towns that have been doing it just to bring it to your attention. One, the only bad thing about Civic Plus is, is the amount of volume. When you go to load your plans to them, to the building officials, there's only a certain file size. That's why I was questioning, I see Central Square has Blue Beam capabilities, which is a good thing. And hopefully, storage facilities for when your applicants come before you and the size of the volume of their drawings can actually fit. Because we had to break ours down in another area, you know, another town or city in Connecticut that was kind of cumbersome while we were setting up for these permits. So, I mean, we do it a lot. So I was just understanding if Civic Plus was part of it because that's the only ones I've dealt with around the areas.
Counselor, you know, as I indicated, Civic Plus did not respond to our RFQ. And I assume that you have familiarity with Blue Beam. We actually use Blue Beam in managing updates to our drawings for the upgrade to the treatment plant. And so you can imagine, you know, the size of those drawings and the number of drawings that are associated with that particular project. And we're using Blue Beam for that particular project.
Yeah, I just want to make sure like on Central Square, just the amount of storage that they can download, the customer, in other words, while submitting drawings and stuff like that, is sufficient during this contract period. That's all.
And I could, I'll just add to that real quick. I kind of lost you a little bit in the middle there, but that was one of the reasons that we were picking, thought Central Square was a better choice over Citizen Serve because Central Square allowed us to use Blue Beam, which we know is a really robust plan review software. The Citizen Serve has a plan review module built in, but it wasn't quite as robust. And we were a little bit concerned about some of those, exactly what you were talking about. So we, that was one of our deciding factors between the two.
Okay, that's all I got there.
Okay, any other questions?
All right, so as you heard from the committee, the recommendation is that we go with Central Square. And the motion that I'm looking for, if the council has no objection, is I'd be looking for authorization to negotiate on behalf of the city regarding acquisition and implementation of online permitting software and asset inventory software as proposed by Central Square. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Are there questions on this motion? Recognizing that you're going to see all this in the budget proposal for next year, but the goal is to try to get as much done as soon as possible because it takes 12 to 15 months for full implementation. And there really is a urgent need for this software. So if there are no other questions or comments, then I'll just call the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Sorry, aye.
Thank you.
I couldn't find my mute.
Now I'm listening to the music behind the answer. No, I'm listening to the music behind the answer.
I was listening to a snow blower outside my house.
Yeah, I'm listening to the wind outside mine. Um, are there any nays? All right, this motion carries. Okay. Um, moving right on to, thank you, everybody, I know that it's getting very late, I'm gonna try to blow through these last few items.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Yeah, thank you, Arista and Marty, Jeremy. Um, Chief Tawee, you're not going anywhere. So, um, item thirteen, I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to appropriate and pay a sum equal to ten percent of the municipal coronavirus relief fund received from the state of Connecticut to be paid to the Torrington Area Health District in accordance with the terms of eligible uses of the funding as defined in the letter from CTOPM dated December sixteenth, twenty-twenty. I believe we provided you with a copy of that letter.
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
I heard, um, Rubino, I heard Councilwoman Ruette. So, um, just very quickly, um, I, um, the appropriation to the city, um, for the CRF funds was five-hundred-twenty-eight thousand, five-hundred-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Ten percent of that would be the fifty-two thousand eight-hundred-fifty dollars. Um, and I can tell you without spending a whole lot of time, um, how incredibly valuable it has been to the city of Torrington to have Torrington Area Health District serve this community. Um, I, I think we were on the phone with them three, four, five times a day, um, in the early stages of the, um, virus. We maybe cut it down to two times a day, um, as we were getting more, um, familiar with where we were going. But now with the vaccines and the incredible demands on their resources, um, we're back up to these three and four times a day phone calls. So, um, I, I, I think that it's, um, it's not only prudent, but it is the right thing to do for us to, to, uh, make this appropriation. I don't know if Chief Tawee, you wanted to add anything?
Yeah, no, just to echo your comments, Torrington Area Health has been a indispensable asset and, and stakeholder during this whole thing. You know, in early December, I, I still remember our first meeting up at Charlotte before this really hit, and, um, you know, Torrington Area Health has been by our side that whole time, and definitely, uh, um, have done yeoman's work and have put in, um, it has had to commit resources that no one would ever have considered necessary. Just to speak to this motion, um, the other thing, one of the reasons this is so important is when they set up this CRF funding, I think they established it under the premise that every municipality had their own health district, and the health districts would get funded through those mechanisms. So this, this motion actually, um, gets the fu- some of that funding that was intended for the health districts and their public emerg- their public health response to help offset the funding, um, so the municipalities such as ours that are serviced by a regional health district, um, you know, providing that funding, I think is so critical, not just to, for what they've done, but the efforts they're doing with vaccination and, and moving forward, so. Rob Rubo is on the phone, Mayor, if, uh, you wanted him to speak to something, or?
Sure, yeah, Robert, not sure if you're muted. Can you unmute yourself?
Hi, Mayor, can you hear me?
There you are, yes, we can.
How are you? Thank, thank you so much for the kind words, um. The feeling is mutual, it's been a pleasure to work with yourself and Chief Tawee, um, and, and all the, all the, uh, community partners within Torrington, so we greatly appreciate this. On a positive note, I can tell you that we've currently vaccinated about twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty people. Um, we're gonna continue to run two, three, potentially four clinics a week. Um, and these resources are gonna go directly towards helping run those clinics, as well as our response, um, to, uh, to the rest of the COVID efforts, uh, especially with the sector rules. So I, I really want to thank you for this.
No, absolutely, thank you, Rob. So are there any questions from the, uh, council as to what we're doing and why we're doing this? Hearing none, I'm gonna call this motion, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? This motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, ma- thank you, uh, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
So item fourteen, um, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the fire chief and the vo- and the vehicle replacement advisory board to approve the purchase of a two-thousand-nineteen E-one HP seventy-eight demonstration quint apparatus with required modifications and equipment from Greenwood Emergency Vehicles in Attleboro Falls, Mass., for the total cost of eight-hundred-sixty-eight thousand eight-hundred-twenty-four dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Thank you, Councilman Rubino.
And just, um, a comment, Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
This did get vetted through our vehicle replacement, um, uh, advisory committee, and, um, this was budgeted for, actually, this is under budget from, uh, what the original cost was going to be for this replacement, so, um, just for the confidence of the other members of the council, um, it did get, uh, approval with a very, um, detailed explanation from the chief.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, and just so that I, that I'm sure that both the motion and the second, we're completely understanding, this is pending authorization by the Board of Public Safety, Wednesday night they meet, and the Board of Finance, which we're going to do a special meeting, so we can get this one wrapped up quickly. Um, Chief Tawee is on the line, does anybody have any questions for him? Seeing and hearing none, now call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you, Chief. All right, so, um, item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion to schedule a virtual public hearing to begin at six-thirty PM on Tuesday, February sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, for the purpose of soliciting citizen input regarding the tax abatement for Torrington Riverfront LLC, also known as Penrose LLC, in accordance with the MOU that was approved by the city council on October twenty-first, twenty-nineteen, and in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, section seven dash four-nine-eight.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino. Thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, the second, I didn't catch.
Waldron.
Thank you. Questions on the motion, this is a public hearing, we're just scheduling the public hearing at this point. No questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. Item sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to, it says assign, um, I, I'm, I'm gonna change this. Uh, a motion to approve or appoint Munistat Services, Inc. as the city's municipal advisor for debt issuance. Um, and as a side note, Hilltop Securities, um, has been our representative over the last several um, bonding, bond issuances. Um, Hilltop Securities did close their Connecticut office, and the city's advisor of record is Bill Lindsay, I'm sure that's a familiar name to all of you, is now working for Munistat. Um, so he's, um, agreed to leave the pricing the same as it has been under the terms of the Hilltop Securities contract. Do I have a motion to, uh?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Questions on the motion?
Here, Kavanaugh.
Yes.
The pricing is the same, is the coverage the same? Are we paying the same amount for the same service?
Yeah, he's, he is just the, uh, he's a financial advisor, he's, um, he pulls together the official statement and does all of the actual sales issuance of the bonds. Um, it's, it's pretty scripted work that he does. So the scope of services and the price will be identical.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Good question. Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize tax refunds indicated on the list dated February one, twenty-twenty-one.
They're moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Wagner. Questions on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen, I'll entertain a motion, um, acting to the city council here and acting as a WPCA to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize sewer usage refunds indicated on the list dated February one, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Move eighteen to second.
I heard Councilman Waldron, I heard Councilman Rubino. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen, uh, entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second to Councilwoman Wagner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have, um, Ray Drew, you're still on the call, do you have anything to add this evening?
Uh, nothing additional tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Rista, you're still on the call, do you have anything to add this evening? Uh, no, nothing additional. Thank you. Um, Chief Tawee, anything you need to add?
No, Mayor, just, uh, thank you very much for your support, these were big items, much appreciated.
Thank you. Um, Attorney Michelle, anything from Corporation Council?
No, thank you, Mayor.
I think I see, um, Penny is still on the call, did you have anything from purchasing this evening, Penny? I'm seeing, she's not unmuting, so I'm gonna assume that means nothing. Carol Anderson, anything from the city court's office?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Um, and I guess that's it, that's, I'm trying to see a full screen here, and I apologize if I missed anybody. Moving on into item number, um, twenty, I will entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you. And, and second by Councilman Rubino, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? From the, from the, um, floor, um, Councilman Kavanaugh, anything this evening?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Um, just to acknowledge, I'm sure that Drake will do this as well, just the, uh, passing of Fletcher Waldron, um, longtime leader and activist in Torrington, um, all for the betterment of our community, so, um, you know, another lost Waldron, so, um, certainly want to give my condolences to the family.
Well said, thank you. Um, Councilman Waldron.
Yeah, thank you, Ann, and, uh, condolences to your family too, for your brother-in-law.
Thank you, Drake.
That's it for me.
Um, thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, and Councilman Rubino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I know it's been a tough winter for, um, losses in our families, so my condolences, um, to, um, Councilwoman Ruette and to Councilman, um, Waldron for their losses, um, and actually for the losses to the city, um, so. With that, um, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner, and second by Councilwoman, uh, Ruette, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned, thank you all very much for this marathon meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Stay safe.
Stay safe, good night, everybody.
Yeah.